Good evening. This meeting for the Winthrop Town Council, August 19th, 2014, is now called to order. You all please rise to the place of leisure. Councilman O'Neil.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is a republic on which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Would you all please remain standing. Very sad weekend with this past week when we saw the death of a beautiful young girl. We could have a moment of silence for Sabrina, beautiful. And for her family. And would you also please remain standing. Another not-so-young person, Barbara Cummings, who was very active in the school. Her husband had the school across the street named after him. She was very active with all the sports and all sorts of stuff in the schools and very active with Winnoc. And Barbara passed away suddenly this week. So get a moment of silence for her. Thank you.
Peter, please. One more person as well. Roseanne Taviris, who ran Pleasant Times, passed away.
Oh, sorry to hear that.
They lived in Winthrop for a long time and then they moved, I think, out towards PBO Lynnfield. But she just passed away as well.
Today?
I think today.
Okay, thank you. A moment of silence for Roseanne. Thank you. Would you like, would you please come over?
Council Callan. Council Sanford.
Here.
Council Boncorry. Council Varone. Council Leteri.
Yes.
Council Boyajin.
Present.
Council Mayo.
Here.
Vice President Davento.
Present.
President Gil.
Present.
Thank you.
My quorum is present. The next item we need to enter is the minutes, but I'm going to ask that we skip over the minutes and return back to that so that we can have a presentation to the Winthrop Police Explorers. I'm going to ask Lieutenant Scappar if he would just give a little introduction and tell us what's going on.
Sure. Our Explorer Post has been active since 1996. Every two years we've got a little national conference and we compete against approximately 2,500, sometimes as high as 4,500 other explorers across the country. This particular year, our group competed against some rather large cities. New York City had several posts, Minneapolis, Orlando, Miami, Houston, some California cities. We were fortunate this year in the competitions, and there's a special competition about investigating white-collar crime. And this year, our team finished second nationally. We were runners-up for the national championship as far as investigating white-collar crime. So that's a big feather in our cap. And also this year, one of our individual explorers, Julia Heiser, he finished first in the National Strength and Conditioning Program that the U.S. Marshals put on. Just to give you a quick idea, he held a 35-pound pack with a gas mask on while squatted with his back up against the wall for over five minutes. And the closest competitor nationally was about a minute and a half behind him. So he stalked the competition and gave us our first national championship in the Strength and Conditioning Conference. Wow. (applause). Aside from our training and accomplishments, I'd like to just mention that our kids are involved in a lot of community services. Just to name a couple of things, we get involved in the food pantry, we get involved in cleaning up Delisle Mosh, the kids take care of Michael Solucci's memorial tree down in front of the middle school, as well as doing community events for the police department. So it's just not training and conferences and competitions. We do a lot of community services and we are available. If anybody has an idea about a cleanup or something, we'd be glad to help them out. I also like to thank the chief, Chief Delahanty, for giving us the opportunity to do this. He lets Sergeant Rogers and I handle the post and give us more or less a free hand in whatever we want to do or whenever we have to do it. And then he also lets our own individual officers do the trainings that have to be done during the course of the year. So he does contribute by giving us that free hand. Just to recognize a couple of important people who helped out this year and every year. This is Jackie Grulich. She's from Action Ambulance. Mr. Portman, who owns Action Ambulance, donates her services for the conference. We needed a female chaperone. And beside that, she provided medical services. She's a trained EMT, so we kind of scored on that. Plus, he paid, Action Ambulance pays for all her expenses on the trip. So she came along. Over here on my far left, this gentleman who was a post captain here, Andrew Minicello, you might know the Minicellows from the Winthrop Elks. Andrew Minicello, Boston police officer, he's kind of like our training coordinator. He was a post captain here for many years. He's a great guy. He helps out. And then the judge's grandson, Richie Farino, and Mr. and Mrs. Rich Farino, he graduated from the program and now he made it kind of like an advisor. So he's here to help out. They helped out at the conference. They volunteered their time. Andrew volunteered their time, as well as Peter Grenitzis, another farmer explorer, and Bob Ferrulo, who's a member of our reserve police force, U.S. Customs Agent. He came along with the trip to help myself and Sergeant Rogers with the organizational and transportation issues. So I just want to recognize all of the kids, if they want to stand up and introduce themselves. Julia, why don't you start it off?
Hi, my name is Julia Heiser.
Pretty good. Chris Matichi.
Vanessa Piesa. Julia Flowers. Samantha Hieston.
Boncorry.
Joe Farino.
Josh Flutner. George Roman.
And I have to just say one more thing. We did a lot of fundraising this year. I'm sure that a lot of people got calls. But we were able to provide them with new uniforms. They look tremendous. This is the best we've ever looked at a conference because we really do our own fundraising and it's very expensive to go to these conferences all across the country. But they look great. The post leader, Samantha, is one of our lieutenants, and her sister, they do a great job of organizing things and getting the kids motivated to be here. And we also want to thank the town council because you've been very supportive. You always recognize us when we do, you know, a great accomplishment and we appreciate that and it means a lot to the post. And I know Sergeant Rogers appreciates that as well as I do. Steve does all the paperwork, kind of like the spokesman and overall, okay, go ahead, do it. But Steve does all the organizational stuff.
So you don't have trouble like public speaking? You're not shy?
No, I don't. That's why I had a lifesaver. But again, we want to thank you and we appreciate your support and the town's support because we can't do it without, you know, this is a community partnership, it really is, because the police, the council, the government, and then the citizens all get together. They help us, you know, they contribute, they go to a fundraiser, or they support us in some way. And it's a good effort for the entire community. So thank you again, everyone. (applause). Tom Roman-Callum wants to remind everybody, we do still have a few copies of Public Safety Cookbook. If you've got a phone call and you contributed to it, your ad is in here or your name is in here. And there's some wonderful recipes in here from all the offices that got involved and all the kids submitted a recipe. And it's great reading material and if you're into cooking, I am, it's a great book to have handy.
I want to commend you and Sergeant Rogers for your many years of leadership on a volunteer basis and for bringing young people in, many of whom have become police officers. But I was watching the group as you were, as they came in and noticing their uniforms and thinking how sharp they looked, right down to those patent leather, high polished shoes. Your kids look great. You've made us proud and you should be proud of yourselves and your parents should be proud of you. It's a real accomplishment, not only to win something locally, but to get into a national competition and win. And for all the other stuff you do around town, as Lieutenant Scappar said, you're willing to clean up, you're willing to do this, you're willing to do that. And we appreciate your enthusiasm and your involvement, especially on volunteer stuff for kids your age. We really appreciate it.
One more thing.
Yes.
Lieutenant Scappar, could you, like, just let everyone know out there that's watching, how a youngster, you know, someone, a teenager like this, would get involved? How they go about it? Do you have an organization?
We have, we have. We take applications on off-years. This will now be an off-year coming up. So you have to be 14 to 21. You have to be a good citizen. You have to have a good school record. You have to have no prior police involvement. And you have to have your parents' approval. And we screen all our applications, so we just don't take everyone. We screen them and do a little background on them. But it's 14 to 21, male or female. If your community surrounds Winthrop and you do not have an Explorer Post, you're welcome in two hours as well. Most of these kids are all from Winthrop. Julia, are you still?
Sargus.
Sargus. Sargus doesn't have one, so we took her, the cousins, and she came in. So we don't limit ourselves. You know, we'll take you if you pass all our strict criteria to get on the post.
Excellent. Thank you. In recognition of your accomplishments, we would like, the council would like to recognize your accomplishments with a citation. And the citation says, "Be it known that Winthrop Town Council hereby offers its appreciation to the Winthrop Police Explorers in recognition of the outstanding achievement in the 2014 National Police Explorers Conference. On behalf of the citizens of the town of Winthrop, we extend our most sincere congratulations and best wishes for your future endeavors, given this 19th day of August 2014 at Winthrop, Massachusetts." Again, thank you all.[698.54][698.54](applause). Nick Carey Schuman would like to have you guys come up and have a picture taken. You want to come around behind us and we'll stay seated. Frank?
I'm in the back seat. Jackie.
(inaudible).
Who's the boss? Do we have a boss?
I'm looking for, I noticed a silhouette of a...
Yeah, the boss should be over there.
Little ones in front. Sam, you hold the post.
Yeah, I'm gone, Kyle. I didn't get up working on it.
(laughing).
It's Craig. Did you get the end there, Craig?
Yeah.
Did you get it?
Can you get us?
Gary, can you get us off?
Again, thank you. Congratulations. (applause). Yes, let's have the parents come up too. Parents of the explorers.
Come on, extra film, it's not going to cost you.
Come on.
It's all digital now.
There's only one?
There's only one? Okay.
There you go. Come on, there's some other parents up there.
Any other parents?
Parents?
Nope. Yes, no. Frank, come on, Frank. Stephen. Stephen, get the... Come on. You can have it.
Thanks again, John.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Good job. (inaudible). I thought you were going to second.
I did.
Moving on to the minutes, minutes of the town council meeting. Minutes of the town council meeting, July 22nd, 2014, as distributed. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Council Leteri. Seconded by Council Boyajin, Council Callan, Council Boncorry. Can we hold on that because you guys went there for the beginning of the meeting and introduced yourselves on the up scene. All right, any discussion on the minutes? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. We have a... You were here 7:30 according to the...
7:30. On the meeting on July 22nd.
The July 20th, the last meeting. Okay, we have a series of special meetings that we did not vote the minutes on because they were executive sessions. However, technically, we need to vote the minutes of the open session. So I'm going to run through the minutes of the open sessions and vote them individually because on some of the meetings, people weren't here. So the first meeting, February 11th, Council Leteri, you were absent, so could I have a motion on that? Motion by Council Sanford, seconded by Vice President Davento. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. February 18th, special meeting. Started at 6:30. Okay, so any, could I have a motion on the special meeting for February 18th?
Motion.
Motion by Council Leteri, seconded by Council Vice President Davento. Discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. March 4th, absent was Council Leteri, Council Boncorry. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Vice President Davento, seconded by Council Leteri. Any discussion of a motion?
Boyajin.
Oh, Boyajin, I'm sorry. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. March 17th, Council Boncorry is absent and...
Late, he was. He was late.
Oh, late, late, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, it said absent. It should have been late. Can we correct that one, Denise? And Council Callan was late. You were, actually you were after 7 o'clock for the 6:30 meeting, so we're going to ask you a little stuff. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Council Leteri, seconded by Council Sanford. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Special council meeting on April 18th. Everybody was present. A motion?
Motion.
Council Vice President Davento, seconded by Council Leteri. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. April 30th, motion?
Motion.
Council Sanford, seconded by Council Vice President Davento. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. May 23rd, all present except for Council Boyajin. Motion?
Motion.
Council Leteri.
Seconded.
By Council Vice President Davento. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. June 17th, all present except for Council Boyajin. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Council Vice President Davento, seconded by Council Leteri. All those... Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. July 28th, all present except for Council Leteri. Motion?
Motion.
Council Vice President Davento, seconded by Council Sanford. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Motion on an executive session on July 28th. All present. Motion. Council Sanford, seconded by Council Callan. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? It's unanimous. On executive session minutes, before they can be released to the public, we need a motion for release. But I have a motion to release the executive session meeting minutes for July 28th.
Motion.
Motion by Council Leteri, seconded by Council Boncorry. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we have to call a roll on this and it needs to be a two-thirds vote. Counsel.
Council Callan. Council Sanford.
Yes.
Council Boncorry.
Yes.
Council Varone. Council Leteri.
Yes.
Council Boyajin.
Yes.
Council Mayo.
Yes.
Vice President Davento.
Yes.
President Gil.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment, I just want to stop the public comment. I didn't want to do it earlier in the meeting due to the tone of the early meeting, the sadness, but we do have some good news. Speedy recovery of Bob Driscoll. Bob is a charter member of the Airport Hazards Committee since 1970, 44 years of continuous service. He had a relatively serious operation about a week and a half ago. He came home today and he's doing fine and doesn't have to go back to the doctor for two weeks for checkups. So Bob, feel better and thank you for all your years of service and we look forward to you getting back on the job. Public comment. Mr. McNair. Just your name and precinct, Tom.
Tom McNair, Precinct 3. I'm a little curious. I have no direct involvement and really don't have any direct caring, but I'm a little disturbed by something that's going on down at the Point as far as the park is concerned. Something's going on in that, I don't know if it's the town athletic department or the Parks and Recreation Department, or the town council, or who it is, but somebody has been making plans down there with this park and there's been work going on. It looks like it's going along quite well, as a matter of fact, so that's not the problem. The problem is, the neighborhood has not been approached. There was a meeting held, I understand, at the instigation of a doctor whose family is from the Point and apparently there were three town officials that took part. Mr. Demille, which was one, and I believe that Mr. Callan was another, and I forget who the third was. But the point is that there is stuff going on down there, including the abolition of a baseball park. And the town has just completely ignored the neighborhood and asked whether or not anybody in that neighborhood cares. Nothing has been said. Now, you people can say that there is a Parks Committee and they have held meetings on this, which is true. Unfortunately, you know, these are a group of, I think it was four or five people who went through this stuff week after week after week. I know I went to one of their meetings because there was an issue that I was interested in and after that, you know, as I said, I don't really have a major interest in the park, except for the exclusion of the neighborhood. And that's what I find to be shameful, frankly. I don't know how many people in other sections of the town have been able to get together with officials of the town when their parks were redone in one way or another, but I know that down in the Point, the Point's got a certain aura about it that makes a lot of people in this town think it's a separate community or just isn't really all that much of a part of Winthrop, which is a lot of nonsense. And I guess in conclusion, I would just ask why we weren't treated better. We are supposed to have a town council that represents Precinct 3. I've heard nothing from Mr. Davento about this issue. I don't know if Mr. Davento has been approached by anybody. If he has, okay, maybe he'd like to tell us what's been going on. Or can somebody else answer the question?
Thank you, Mr. McNair. Anyone else? Public comment?
Hi. My name's Jan Cole and I've been a resident of Bayview Avenue my entire life. And as tax days in the town of Winthrop, the Point Shirley residents would like to request to have a meeting and to have the opportunity to voice their opinions, concerns, and suggestions regarding renovation of Coffin Park, as well as the ongoing football issue, the traffic issue, the parking issue, that is ongoing down at Coffin Park. Okay? I respectfully submit 100 signatures, over 100 signatures, from the residents of Point Shirley requesting a meeting and also a petition of over 100 signatures to also discuss the ongoing football practice down at Coffin Park. It's a huge issue down there and we would like to have a meeting down at the PSA Hall. Dr. Baumguss, who we was talking about, who had a meeting with the three gentlemen he talked about, apparently do not want to give us the time of day. They don't want to hear our concerns, they don't want to hear our suggestions for the park. We live down Point Shirley. We use that park on a daily basis. We should have a voice as to what goes on down there.
Okay, thank you. Another one?
Hi, David Osborn, Precinct 2. As you know, I filed three complaints, what is it, Attorney General's Office on Open Meeting Law violations, as I see them. And it continues on, this is a never-ending story. I've never really gotten involved with it, but I'm really tired of it all. Every single town council meeting we have is a violation, literally. Every subcommittee is a violation of the law. You've been given three complaints from me, you are required within a certain number of days to respond to me on each one you have. You're required on each one of those complaints to put it on the agenda for a public hearing on the town council and review it, if you have it. I mean, this is never-ending, but I'm going to talk specifically about executive sessions. I'm just going to take a minute to read even the... This is from the Attorney General's, this is one of the decisions. Furthermore, for an executive session notice, the chair must state the purpose for the executive session, stating all subjects that may be revealed without compromising the purpose for which the executive session was called. A precise statement of the reason for convening an executive session is necessary under the Open Meeting Law because that is the only notification given to the public that the committee or the council would conduct business in private and the only way the public would know if the reason for doing so was proper improper. The way you go into an executive session is 100% improper. And that is a letter, too, by the way, Copelman and Page, who were told in this letter that their opinions to whoever they were representing were not correct. Now, that's Copelman and Page, and there's three or four others. So if you think that Copelman and Page has given you good advice, let me tell you something, they're not, on the Open Meeting Law. And now I'm going to read a second thing about executive sessions. The Open Meeting Law requires that prior to entering executive session, the chair of a public body must first announce in session the purpose for the executive session. The level of detail about the executive session purpose must be included in the notice of the meeting. At a minimum, the council should have stated the executive purpose on which they rely for discussion about this complaint and should also detail the details about the anticipated And finally, as far as, this is another from, this is another AG decision, how you're going into executive sessions is really loose, very loose, and probably invalid. Quote, "The mere possibility of litigation is not sufficient to invoke executive sessions." Litigation must be pending or clearly and imminently threatened or otherwise demonstrably likely. And that's the AG's, that's a historical case. You are going into the executive session because you used the word litigation. You have got to, the way you've gone in, the citizens do not know if you are abiding by the law because you've never cited the information, the details of executive session as required, and you've never given us the opportunity to dispute it under the 10 exemptions that are in the Open Meeting Law. This has been ongoing since you were council president. And I find that, and what makes it worse is, I really truly believe that most of you know this, and not one of you would stand up and say, you know, Mr. Osborn, you're right, or Mr. Gil, I think we should be doing something different. We don't have, we're not obligated to go into an executive session on this. And there's a whole issue of executive session minutes, the poor minutes, the incomplete minutes, the insufficient minutes of executive sessions, across the board. It's a zip, that law is for citizens. Copelman and Page does not represent you. Copelman and Page...
One minute, Mr. Osborn.
I don't need to be told that I have a minute. Don't interrupt me.
I'll give my time, Tom.
Please don't interrupt.
You have one minute, Mr. Osborn.
Don't interrupt me. Give me my five, and you can talk...
End of the sound of 47 seconds.
You can talk for an hour.
Craig gave his time.
Craig gave his time.
Don't interrupt me.
I'll give my time. But if the council, as a council, wishes to extend Mr. Osborne's time, if there is no objection, I will do that. Is there any, is there any objection? If not, continue.
See, no, you, I lose my train of thought, Peter.
Continue on.
Don't do it again. Give me my five minutes.
Don't threaten me. This is, I am the president of this Town Council.
Give me my five minutes. If I start swearing, if I start yelling, you can throw me out.
You're shut off. You're out. Any further public comment?
Yes.
Yes, Judy.
Hi, Judy Mann Coiman, Precinct Four, and I'm here to invite everyone to the thirty annual, Those Who Can, For Those In Need, Life Issues Resource Volunteer Fair. It will be held on Saturday, September sixth, from ten to two, at Ingleside Park. There will be all types of children's activities, live entertainment, and food, all free for everyone. We have approximately forty organizations from the Boston and North Shore area that will have tables, resources, and volunteer opportunities. This is good for the students looking for community service hours. Categories that we cover are elderly, losing a loved one, children, low income, and homelessness. Also during that time, the Winter Art Association will be sharing the park with their event, selling their very talented wares. Any questions, they can contact me at six one seven four six two five seven one nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Any further public comment? Mr. McNair.
It would be nice to know if you people are going to be giving an answer to a question that was asked as to whether the Point Shirley residents are going to be treated to a meeting over the park.
We've been advised...
An answer, or at least, at least an accommodation that an answer is worthwhile.
I can give you an answer.
I didn't ask you for an answer, sir, I said whether or not the answer can be accommodated.
I don't want to interrupt you again, so when you finish.
To get a meeting going.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
We've been advised by the Attorney General that we don't go into deliberation in public comment, it's against the law. Given Mr. Osborne's comments, if somebody on the council later on in the meeting wants to offer a suggestion that we have a Point Shirley meeting, but given the cautions that we're under, being questioned upon our proper use of the open meeting law and the proper definition of public comment, I am not at liberty to jeopardize this council by going into deliberation.
You can't even say that you will take this up later?
Yes, I can say that. I haven't finished yet.
You didn't say it.
I haven't finished yet. You've interrupted me five times.
Make it six.
You're done. You are done.
Good.
And I won't give the courtesy of answering your question. You're done.
You didn't want to.
Good night. Any further public comment? Mr. Manning.
Jim Manning, Nine Elliott Street, Winter, Mass. A little bit ago, me and my wife were driving down to the town here for her to get a ballot to go into the position of what she's been doing for the parks and stuff. What was the other thing I was going to say? My wife has spent hundreds and hundreds of hours, and she's very passionate about this town, which I am. You sold me my house in nineteen ninety-nine, Mr. Gill. My daughter loves your pizza.
Which pizza is it?
His, not mine.
Yeah, Mr. Letarius.
Oh, I...
You wouldn't want to eat mine.
Yeah. She's raised thousands and thousands of dollars and things. I was up the yard one day, and a phone call came in, and there were you and my wife was discussing about a position to be filled. I didn't appreciate the call to my wife because how it was professionally done to her, and it really bothered me a lot, and the amount of love and respect I have for my wife and the town and everything here, I feel that you, Mr. Gill, owe my wife an apology, because I heard the conversation perbatim, that you said you would find other people to fill a position before you would reappoint her. I, perbatim, and I was in awe. I felt that was totally unprofessional. That's something in twenty-three years I've learned in the military is integrity. Professionalism, honor, respect. I respect my wife. I love my wife. I love this town. I'm supporting my wife. I feel we need to apologize, an apology to my wife. That's all I'm asking for.
Thank you. Any further public comment? John.
My name is Dawn Daniel, Precinct Three. I have been known in Hudson's Town before anybody knew what it meant to have a safe park. I started my very first one at the Roman Fort Banks, and the chair of the Parks Committee, my very first conversation with her was, hi, my name is Linda Brasad, and Peter Gill gave me your phone number after my conversation with him when he was elected, because he told me you were the person to talk to about putting the Parks Committee together, because I want to fix Coffin. There were five people appointed, residents appointed when we did Pico Park, and two alternates. I was one of those alternates. We could not finish Pico Park because we were a thousand dollars short from out. I said, give me twenty-four hours, I will have that thousand dollars. I called three Point families and had that thousand dollars twenty-four hours later. And Pico Park, our park opened, Mr. Gill. We moved on to Pond Street. I was one of the only other people that fundraised for that. I've raised over ten thousand dollars just from Point people. That money has gone into Pico and has gone into Pond Street. I know why I wasn't reappointed. I know it was personal, we both agreed on that. I'm okay with that. It was not a personal thing, it was always about the safety of the kids. Everybody that knows me understands that, and I'm okay with that. I just feel like it's a shame that you made it personal, and I know why, and you know why, and the other person involved knows why, but it's a shame, because everybody else also knows that out of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the town brought, only thirty thousand dollars is being allocated towards play equipment. And I wanted fifty thousand dollars of that to be allocated, because if we're not doing the baseball field or all these other great things, where's all that money going? And if our DPW is doing all that prep work, there should be a lot more money. I know if we don't pour our surface before it's forty degrees, we can't pour the surface. I know that these things, I've been doing it for five years. I'm the only volunteer in this town with a ninety thousand dollar park under my name. It's called Roman Fort Banks Park. I'm okay. I sent out an email on June fourth, went to all the councils, I went to the school committee, went to the principals, went to the superintendent, I got three responses, from Mrs. Callow, Mr. Van Cury, and one on the school committee notice, the person I had a fight with, who's also on the Parks Committee. Probably why I'm not on, but it's okay. But what's not okay is that thirty thousand dollars worth of equipment could have been a hundred thousand dollars, because all the people that wanted to write checks won't, because they're vegan approach. And it's the kids that are suffering, and they're not listening to me when I ask them to please write those checks anyways. It's not about me, it's not about you, it's not about the people, it's not about the people we're mad at, it's about the kids. It's about the Point, it's going to end up with thirty thousand dollars worth of crappy equipment. Not crappy, sorry, because it's probably going to be okay, but thirty thousand dollars worth of equipment is what's in every other park in this town, and you didn't give me the chance to make that thirty into a hundred, and everybody knows I am perfectly capable of it. You made it personal the day you called the house, and my husband heard the conversation, when you said you would do everything in your power to not reappoint me to that for me, and I told you I would not be quiet about it, but you took me this long to not take it to heart and actually cry, because you did hard to me, because in my opinion, that's what bullies do, and to me, you're a big bully.
Thank you, Mrs. Manning. Any further public comment? CNN. Tom Manning.
Good evening. For the record, the Coffin Park details have been discussed, I know personally I've written numerously on that, what's, the plan has been articulated through the Park Committee on my blog, and I have five thousand emails that that goes out to every week, and I've sent a menu of discourse on what we've been doing at the park under the auspices of the DPW, together with Sean Missmore of Parks and Rec. I trust that those individuals have the full competency to do what's right for the park. I understand that they have reached out and had kitchen conversations with the numerous folks in the Point. I understand that there may be some differences of opinion, and that's to be expected. We had differences of opinion at Pico, on Pond Street, wherever. People have different ideas, and hopefully those ideas can be incorporated. But I trust that my team is competent and certainly willing to sit down with anyone and discuss whatever good ideas may be valid and acceptable for implementation at this park. This park, Coffin Park, is important to everyone in this town, not just Point Shirley. This park represents over five times the amount of effort that we've made in any other park. We are going to be spending five times the amount of money at this park to make sure that it's done well, and done with thoughtfulness and with, you know, as much open process as we can afford. We are under a strict deadline to spend the state's grant funds by the end of December. So I think that, to some degree, we've fallen victim to a very aggressive schedule. I understand the Park Committee has had meetings, public meetings, hosted public meetings with regard to the design of this park. I hope that those who continue to have strong interest in the park continue to bring their thoughts forward to that committee, which is charged with this very issue of dealing with any aesthetic or other safety or other park values that we want to discuss. You know, if the Park Committee can't fulfill its function, I certainly would be willing to meet with anyone at any time at the Point. I know that Council Del Bento has been paying close attention to what's going on in his, in his precinct, and has been advised and praised of the continuous progress we're making. There's much more that needs to be done here. We have a complete easterly edge of that park, I'm sorry, westerly edge of that park that's eroding, and we need more money. So it's not lost on us that, you know, we may not achieve complete, you know, repair of that park due to Mother Nature, more than anything else. But rest assured that this is, this is something that we want to have, you know, everyone to weigh in and have thoughtful conversations about, and not have tense, you know, conversations if need not be that, because we can, we can do better, and we, and I stand by my team, Steve and Sean, to meet with anyone who wants to discuss what's planned for, for the park. Council Del Bento, you looked at me and wanted me to make a comment.
Yeah, I'm delighted, thank you. I mean, it's been at this press conference for almost a year, if not longer, and there have been several meetings, we've worked on, and, you know, unfortunately, a lot of people did attend in the early stages, the planning stages, and...
Right, we had Conservation Commission issue a notice of intent, an order of conditions, which was completely public and fully advertised, which certainly had public comment periods to that as well, so we're doing it under a permit. But again, if people want to continue to discuss what's going on there, I'm happy to do that.
Excuse me?
Public comment period will take up again at the end of the meeting. Mr. McNair, thank you for addressing the meeting issue and addressing this pose. Will you leave those with me when you go? And Mr. Del Bento, if you offer to participate.
Yes, I'm pleased to also report that we are under review presently for the permitting and acceptance by what we've proposed for the Harbor Walk off of Crystal Cove, Shirley Street, and I've put in a Dropbox, a Army Corps of Engineers report, together with design drawings, that are currently under review for public comment, and I think it's an extensive analysis of what we've presented, and I'm optimistic that after the comment period runs, that we will receive favorable report from the Army Corps, and be off and running to look for funding sources. This project will cost roughly five million dollars. We are applying for both public, mass public works grants, as well as seaport bond funds to fund the construction of this facility. And so it's moving forward. I left in the council Dropbox a draft report, because I think it's important, I'm going to speak to two draft reports that were under review at the present time. I don't want to submit to the council a finished and complete document. I think these both, both the Winter Community Health Needs Assessment Report, as well as the Economic Development Strategic Plan for the Town, deserve input before they become final, and so I'm asking that you take a look at those documents. If you need them in hard copy, I'll certainly print them for you, but they're worthy of a review and comment from any of the council. They will be, you know, the essential literature of the community, once they're adopted by this council, and it's important that you have an early view on what they say and what they address relative to, you know, some important issues that we're facing. So I'd like you, the council, to, if it has the opportunity over the next couple of weeks to review these reports and get to me any comments you might have, I'd appreciate that, so we, so we know when we put the ribbon on this, we, both of these, that they stand as a testament to input from the council.
Can I ask you a question? This is the one, this isn't the one that was done by the, by the airport? This is the one that was done before the airport?
No. It was done in a different...
National General?
Yeah. This is a different process entirely.
Right.
We're talking right now about the Community Health Needs Assessment Report.
I remember seeing that one a while back, but what I was getting at, because they're both pretty detailed, and I don't have that type of skill, do they, do they bring, do they hit, you know, they both cross, listen, we all live in the town.
They don't overlap them.
Do they, do they overlap in their, no? So the two different sets of needs that came out?
Quite distinguished, actually, yeah, in terms of the scope. This is more of a survey of...
So what I'm getting at, is any of the issues that are in that health, do they have any causal effect from the airport and none whatsoever, because they only dealt with noise issues?
This is just patient-reported data about what they feel are the most important issues of health in the town.
And I was just curious if any of that was because of the issues from the airport, that the airport study didn't come in. I didn't know if there was any causal reason that there could be some linkage between the two, because I don't understand the data. I went to both the meetings, and it's confusing to me what they're talking about, but it just seems the center of the entire issue is our health, and the airport had a health study, these guys had a health study, I know this was statistical, how old, how breathing, you know, all that type of stuff, but, you know...
Would you, so my interpretation, when I looked at it, the airport health study reported on surveys of individuals, phone studies that, on airport qual, air quality in relation to respiratory illnesses, other things like that. This was a report asking the people in the town of what their biggest health concerns were. Some of their concerns overlap with the reported data as far as, there was a report on lung cancer they talked about in the, in the airport study, and the asthma stuff, but that was, it doesn't really overlap enough that you're not going to see a causal link or anything like that.
But you know something? I read, I saw that thing there, and we had issues with, you know...
Substance abuse is one of the things.
Gentlemen, through the chair, please, no cross discussion. Mr. Mayo.
So, I looked at it, and I said, you know something? There's a constant drone, drone of noise that hits the town. Now, that affects different people in different ways, so the health effect, geez, you know, you have, let's say you're not getting higher cancer, but you're, you know, you're going, you know, great, listen, the people down at the Point, the plane comes in every thirty seconds, just sitting there with their remote, up and down, and up and down. What type of issue does that have that may or may not be shown in the health study? Because to me, I understand that they said they were clear they're not causing any trouble from what they were looking at, but I'm thinking, hey, we got a lot of other stuff, and I'm wondering, you know, how much of that is caused by that particular element? And that, to me, is where the causal link comes in, which, you know, in a certain way, builds our case when we go into these negotiations with them and say, listen, we get some real issues, you know, the noise is killing the seniors, so we could use a, you know, a counselor or, you know, something like that, so that's where I'm driving.
Thank you, Mr. McNair.
Yes, you know, there's not enough of a sampling that's valid, I believe, here, counselor, in order to do that, but trust me that this is essentially a document for which we want to base our grant applications and other...
which we want to base our grant applications and other resource efforts on. That's why we're doing it, in order to show that the town has put thought in and put an assessment of its basic health conditions, so that we can use it as a strategy document and then proceed with filing for grant applications. You can't do this, you can't get the money unless you do this first, and so we've done it, and we're developing it, it'll be finished in a couple of weeks. It'll help us in that effort. Drawing a correlation between this and any other study would be very difficult to do, in my opinion. But it stands on its own as our own survey of what we consider to be the key health concerns.
The communities prioritize, sorry, Council President?
Yes.
To me, that the communities prioritize what they feel their biggest health needs are. Simply put, that's what that is.
Right. As well, you know, there was support for, from the council and a request to have the Collin Center develop, along with its other seminars and efforts that it's had over the past year, to put together a final economic strategic plan for the town. I'd ask that, this is a very important document for us, because we will also use it to seek, you know, concepts, ideas for economic development and proceed with, you know, some grant applications on the basis of this. It's a wonderful document, it's well-written. I'd ask the town, read it, and the council, read it, and get back to me on your thoughts. I put it in your Dropbox, several documents, some to be taken up under executive session, but a note from Ms. Emily Stapleton, who is the CFO of Hubway Bicycle Systems. You might know that in Boston and Cambridge and Summer Grove, there's a bike sharing program, and it's doing very well. And under MAPC, those stations were developed to enable folks to join a kind of a program where they use a card and you lease a bike for a few minutes or hours a day, and you can travel around on it and repark it to another station. It's very successful in those other communities. I'd like to see it come to a conclusion. I talked with Beverly Scott, she would be in favor of one being located at East, Orient Heights Station, so we could conceivably have bikes, you know, utilizing Winthrop Streets under this program. So I'm pursuing it, I wanted you to just be in the loop as to where that conversation's And I'd ask my CFO to have a quick report.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the year-end closing and a couple of noteworthy results. So year-end can be a challenging process, as we all know, but I do want to thank the department heads and their staff for all the cooperation. It was a relatively smooth process, once again, and that is a direct result of their diligence and planning their own closing with their expenditures. And so I appreciate that, solid teamwork right through. And there's a couple of noteworthy results that I wanted to comment on. Line item deficits, these are deficits in general fund line items that are tallied up at the end of the year and reported. Last year, we had about $15,000, which isn't bad, because as you know, we still had plenty of surplus that certified free cash. This year, we're at about $500 in line item deficit, so that's a positive thing. We also have a, at least have a low volume of prior year unkeyed bills, which are in your packet tonight, it's approximately $800 worth. You know, there may be more that come up. As of right now, in our communications with departments, as of right now, is everything. Then just want to comment on the police department. If you recall, the police department received a transfer of $26,000 in May. They had anticipated that they would need that to close out the year, combination of overtime and other personnel costs. They're actually turning back $18,000 of that, so it's a good example of, you know, effective planning, then once they had it, they didn't just spend it, they used it wisely and used what they needed to use, so I appreciate that. And then I know throughout the course of the year, I often touch on special revenue funds and how deficits in special revenue funds affect our free cash. Last year, we had deficits in these funds of approximately $90,000. Some of that's timing with grant money coming in. This year, we don't know for sure, but we're projecting that it's definitely under $10,000, quite close to about $5,000 or $6,000. So all of this is a result of the teamwork between the departments and within the finance department, and now we're in the process of filing our scheduled reports and other related reports to DOR in order to get our free cash.
Thank you, Tim.
Yes, there is a lot going on outside. Anyone who drives around Winthrop can see, much is going on, and we're both pleased at that, but we're very stressed too. Limited resources, high priority issues getting done, contracts being fulfilled, you know, streets and sidewalks getting fixed, and parks getting fixed, and schools getting repaired. Right now, our priority is for successful opening for school. We've said to Superintendent Masero that all hands are on deck to support the schools in this important time when, you know, we are merging four campuses into three and doing a lot of handiwork with local staff, DPW staff, and school staff, picking up every broom and brush and toting every bale to get, you know, these schools to the point of readiness, and they will be ready. And, you know, our thoughts, you know, right now are with the schools, we're focused on them as our priority, and I'm grateful to have such a team that we have that is willing to reach across and help out when we need the help. It's a great compliment to Winthrop. What the town is really about is, you know, cooperating and collaborating when we need it, and everyone pulling together. And so, you know, I just, I'm so grateful these days to have the team that we have, particularly under the leadership of Steve Collet and the leadership of General Masero and everyone, you know, who's pitching in to help out. So, you know, we will still be focused over the next couple of weeks at a breakneck speed to make these schools what they need to be. But if you walk around them, both the outside and the inside, you'll see tremendous transformation going on. And it's about the kids, as was said earlier. They're going to get something nice. I understand the football team went into the gym at the now high school and was shocked and amazed and couldn't wait to start, you know, running around that gym, because it does, really has become a transformative event for the town, for the schools. So, you know, I'm just grateful for the team we have.
Any comments from the council man?
So we spoke about a week or two ago, and we both said that we had seen Winthrop continuing on in the environmental bill. Do you know?
Yeah, we did, and we successfully made it.
So we're in on that now? There were two items there, there was the three bills for the Lewis Lake thing, and then there was 625.
Yeah, Lewis Lake, part of that, for Walk Winthrop, and also in the transportation bond, there were two bills, so it was a transportation bill and the environmental bill.
Okay.
And in the transportation bill, it has been signed by the governor for $2.5 million eligible for funding for Winthrop Carter Project, one first phase of Winthrop Carter Project.
Is that, you're talking about the tip, or you're talking about the Lewis Lake?
I'm not talking about the tip, and I'm not talking about Lewis Lake. I'm talking about one line item in the transportation bond bill that authorizes up to $2.5 million for the Winthrop Carter Street project. We had been pursuing the tip, but we took a Plan B approach in knowing that the tip money at federal level would be either dried up or unavailable for a long, long time, and we've cut the project in half, and we sought authorization out of the state's own transportation bond bill for a substantial bite in that project, and, you know, that's what we're going to go and proceed with. But the other matter was the Walk Winthrop funding for, was it $650,000, Steve?
625.
600,000. 600,000 for building the boardwalk along the Morton Street side towards Short Beach, connecting what DCR has built out to a point in the back of the cemetery, and then continuing that pathway along the Marsh Edge out towards Main Street and creating an estuarial walk for the town and for visitors and for the, to bring stewardship to Dahlia Marsh. So that's in the planning stages. Now, we have signed down with an engineer to develop some initial plans for that. The third matter was the Lewis Lake issue, that's in the environmental bond bill, and that calls for up to $3 million of authorization for addressing the drainage issue that we have spoken about with respect to that whole swale in Lewis Lake, the dredging of Lewis Lake and all of that. So we're in the process of examining engineering. We may need to put some funds up early now, since we have that authorization in place with the environmental bond bill, to see clear, to put some town funds up for developing engineering funding, to develop plans for it. Yeah, it's not going to be cheap. It's probably 10 to 15% of the total project cost.
$250,000.
It would be $300,000 in engineering, sure. Not a small project, just similar to what we did with Ingleside Park.
Any further questions from the council manager? I just had a couple of comments on the look around Winthrop. Several people who have come to visit over the summer, who haven't been in Winthrop for a period of time, commented on what it looks like around here as, you know, from going over the bridge to down the streets and the trees and Walden Street and the new school, and people are very impressed by what's going on. And from my position on the school committee last night, Mr. Masero did give a presentation where he pretty much said the same thing as you, the issues that needed to be addressed are being addressed. There's a time crunch, there's only 10 days left. But on the 29th, he is having tours of the new high school and the two buildings. If there is no further, yes, Mr. Mail?
Yeah, so just to go back to this Lewis Lake thing, so if we had to put up 300 grand for that, what would be the value of talking to the golf club? Because my guess is that that would be a major benefactor. And, you know, I think I heard they put 80Gs into reseeding this year, and it got washed away, and my feeling is if I was going to, you know, maybe be having to put in that kind of stuff, and this was going to solve those kinds of problems, that maybe the viability of the club could be enhanced, and maybe they could, you know, think about a partnership, so to speak, to help, you know, push that, just my take on it, if you...
We have had preliminary discussions with the golf course, but we have not signed any agreement at this point, but we're discussing. They're certainly thrilled about the prospects of this issue, which has been a generational problem finally getting addressed. But again, let me caution you that this is just authorization. We have to put a good plan together and then compete for funding, because just because they issue, the state issues a $300 million bond issue, doesn't mean that that's all available. They may put bond cap funding on an annual basis of 30, 50, 70 million is allowable for funding, so you need to go and compete to get that, your share of that funding. So it'll be very important for us to put a very, very strong effort forward with a good engineering plan. So I'm giving you a little warning with the next, over the fall, we're hopeful that we'll present to the council a request for funding for engineering to do this project.
So in the same light, I know that we've locked in with MAPC about the rest of our title issues, so to speak, is this a little, I mean, are they, you know, touching on that to give a little bit of extra, you know, whatever you, you know, study information? I mean, we're paying them to talk about the flooding, that's flooding, I mean, all seems to have some effect about each other.
Many properties along this area will be benefited. If we can move forward with a process that I think that Director of Public Works has been encouraging, it really will open up that whole Veterans Road as a scenic way rather than a way that's struggling with the environmental challenges that it has right now. And that's the game plan, is to really make that much more of an asset to the community than that Veterans Road card.
Thank you. Can I just ask one more question?
Yes.
So if I'm not wrong, I see these guys from the hospital advertising that, you know, they're moving, you know, bodies in at the end of the year, and I see the temples moving along, and the Highland School has taken applications. So all those buildings would then come on as tax?
That's right.
And is that, is that part of your budget planning?
New growth, right. We can't assess that, this January 1st, we'll snap the lines afresh, the new values that have been established there. So we should see an assessment of new growth that'll come from the assessing, the board assessors, that will tell us what that new value is, and will inform our next budget in terms of new growth.
So that's not money you took into consideration?
We did, a little bit, because you can do it progressively.
Okay.
So we took a little bit, but we didn't know we were estimating.
A little bit being a little bit?
No, we did, what, we did 120?
Okay, let's move on to on the agenda. Councilman Corry, I skipped over committees and reports, sorry, on the...
Yeah, we will have a rules meeting on Wednesday, 27th August at 6:00 PM, if you can get us all, 6:00 PM, and that will be on the delivery license.
Thank you.
What time is that again?
Wednesday, 27th at 6:00 PM.
Okay, and all business, petition for a telephone poll that was postponed from May, oops, from June, sorry. From June. It was a motion to move that the town council vote to allow the National Grid to install a new pole at 302 Shirley Street and install two 5-inch conduits encased in concrete from P302 to Manhole 167 in order to re-feed the transformer in the manhole from a riser pole instead of faulty underground switches or take any other action relative to that tool. It was postponed on the 6/17 meeting, so the motion is still on the floor. Is there any discussion?
I'm just going to ask you, I can't see Steve. But you can see, is this the one we had the issue with to resolve, whether it's going to go?
This is the one at the corner of, I believe, is it the corner of Revere and Shirley? I don't know the back address.
No, no, Revere and Cross. This is the one at Cross Street?
No.
Revere and Cross approved. I mean, Revere and Cross approved.
Right, but then we had Revere and Cross, right?
Revere and Shirley.
No.
This is Shirley.
Okay, number one, sorry. This, the form that came with it refers to Shirley Street and Cross Street.
Shirley Street.
The one there?
Shirley and Cross, that's a different location. We're talking about a different location.
At the last meeting, didn't we say that we were all resolved on the one at the corner of Shirley and Revere, and therefore we withdrew the motion?
Yes, they remade underground.
So we don't, we don't need to have any action on that. But we did have one postponed that is on Cross Street, near the corner of Shirley. You know that one? The one that was, Mr. De La Hanty had an issue with?
Yes.
And I thought that...
The petition didn't change from the first petition that they offered.
So I had asked Mr....
I'm still not in favor of it.
Oh, you're not? Okay.
Not in favor of what?
I wasn't in favor, I didn't know, I didn't think that they, that they looked at any other alternatives, but the petition came back at us same exact way. You've got a leaning pole on Cross Street, you have a leaning pole on private property, and then proposed to put a new pole with a guy wire system on Shirley.
Right.
That's the same petition that they came to us in the beginning.
Right, and I thought that you had checked with...
I did, I checked with National Grid about it, but I'm hearing this for the first time.
Oh, I thought you, some of the confusion, you and Steve, I thought you had checked with Steve on this one.
Well, I did, and I thought I understood Steve, but I'm hearing it differently tonight with Steve. Did you make a recommendation to them to do it differently?
We looked, the recommendation was made to them for them to engineer it such that they didn't have to install a new pole. they didn't have to install a new pole. Petition came back the same way.
Hold on, hold on one second. So the, the item that's on the corner of Shirley and Revere is done. We withdrew that motion. So the motion tonight was for the cross. The motion tonight was for the, for the pole that had been delayed on Shirley Street serving the Cross Street leaning pole and the leaning pole on the private property. Apparently the communication got confused at some point. So at this point...
I wasn't, I wasn't really involved in a conversation with that other than the fact that I refused the petition that you showed me.
Right.
And I said, this is the same petition that came the first time.
Okay.
That's my own.
And then I thought you and Mr. McKenna had talked after that.
I have a brief recess for Steve.
Yeah.
I need to have a recess.
We'll, we'll move on the agenda and come back to that.
Also, wasn't there a town manager's call? There was also an issue with the resident who was going to work something out with National Grid.
Right.
That's where, we left that off.
That's right.
And they were supposed to come back with what are all the alternatives?
That's right. No one ever did.
That's right.
They came back with the same thing, right?
But wasn't the ideal situation that they...
Let them, let's talk about it, we'll come back. The issue was that, I believe the confusion was that I had spoken to Mr. McKenna, who was going to speak to Mr. Callow, and the communication got messed up there. But this was definitely a request, a second request, and there was no...
No change.
Alternative produced. So I thought that they had then, I thought Mr. McKenna and Mr. Callow had then agreed, okay, go ahead. Apparently they had.
I thought they were placing the...
Okay. They were, they were supposed to take the pole off the private property, is my understanding, and put a new one on Shirley Street to replace it. That was their proposal.
Actually...
That's what they wanted.
That's what they wanted to do, but they thought the resident wanted to replace the existing pole with the new one.
The resident wasn't clear what he wanted to do. He was going to work something out with the National Grid. And my understanding was that they had some meetings, there were some lawyers involved, and, and there was not a resolution reached and then that, Mr. Callow and Mr. McKenna worked it out, but I was, they apparently, the communication broke down. Okay, still on the whole business, the limousine is, is still in the, in the other committee. We'll go back to new business after Mr. McKenna and Mr. Callow caucus and we'll move on now to the open meeting law seminar. Cooperman and Page has offered to offer us a, an open meeting law seminar for the council and for all of the various committees in town who have to work by the open meeting law. It's part of their package. There is no cost to the community. It's part of their service that they provide us anyway. They've offered to do one or two seminars. If, if they could do one and everybody would attend, that'd be great, but if they do one and then an alternate, an alternate one for those who can't attend. I spoke to them a couple of times over the last couple of weeks and tentatively came up with doing it on the night of our next, of our, not our next meeting, meeting after, on September 16th, which would give, which would give, well, four weeks' notice. At which point, if that's when the council would like to do it, I would do it on the regular agenda so that we wouldn't have to have a special meeting to do it. We would do it as an open meeting so that we could have input. If we do it just as a hearing, then there can be no deliberation. So my suggestion is we do it at the September 16th meeting and I'd like input from the council. It's gonna take an hour and a half approximately. Would you like to start early or would you like to go right on at 7:00 and just move through the agenda and I'll put them on right at the beginning? How does that sound?
You're gonna invite the school committee and the planning board and all?
Everybody, yeah. All committees. Yeah, and we'll do it at the senior center so we'll have enough room. And then subsequent to that, for anybody who couldn't make it, we'll set up another meeting.
I know I won't be able to make that day.
Okay. If there is no objection, then I will set that up for September 16th at the senior center, a regular meeting, regular time, and we'll do it as the first item on the agenda as we did the council.
Can I make a suggestion then, just so that we get beyond this? Maybe we should require that at least every committee chairman or representative has, you know, somebody there, you know?
That's the plan. That I will invite, I will urge every committee to send the chairman or, and other people, but at least the chairman or his designate.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't invite them. I would say it's a requirement of their, you know, listen, this is...
You are required?
You're required. Show up.
Okay, okay.
You want to designate a second meeting as well because some people aren't gonna be able to make one?
Yes, yeah. At one point, we, at some point after we get feedback from the other people, they'll say, okay. But yes, everybody will be required to attend. Good point, council.
And this will be open to the public?
Yes, it's a regular council meeting. The second one won't necessarily have to be open to the public because there won't be any deliberation.
And also for people that can't come to the meeting, it will be televised, you know, versus...
Right, right, right. That's a good point. Okay, so I will set it up for the 16th at the regular meeting and it will be at the senior center. Very good. Tim, we have an appropriation, move that the town council approve the fire chief to expend from insurance recovery fire department fund 712 up to $37,707.72 for the purpose of procuring and outfitting the fire boat. Don't take any action relative there too. Do you want to comment on that one, Mr. McKenna, or should I, Tim?
The chief, Chief Flanagan.
Yes, this was, we procured from U.S. Coast Guard a 27-foot safe boat. It was built in 2002. It has a value of $116,000 without the motives. Insurance money from Sentinel had been sitting there waiting, so we were now asking the council to transfer that money to put engines on this boat. We have much of the equipment that was on the other boat that will be transferred over and this will not be the final boat, fire boat, but this will be an asset to the town for many years if we can complete this project.
Thank you. Motion revoked. Oh, quick. Hold on. Counsel?
If you're gonna make a motion, then we can have a discussion afterwards.
Yeah, we're gonna make a motion to refer it.
Can I add something to that?
Sure. All right, let's, let's do the motion and then we'll refer it. Motion by council, Leteri, seconded by council vice president, Delvento. Councilman.
So we still have yellow boots sitting in storage with two engines. Is there any, I mean, a 27-footer, I think he's got twin 250s down there. They were, they were decent engines because the guy blew them up and then had them redone. And the boots is sitting there and the big value of the boots is the engines, not the hull.
We'll be going to disposition on that vessel, I think in October when the three years runs.
Is that too late, Brian?
Is that too late, three years? Well, that's not, here's the thing. The funding for this, the funding for, if we auction off yellow boots, that funding goes to the general fund. Okay, so he needs an appropriation of that one. You can take, at that point, when we receive the funds and it washes through our ledger, then you can appropriate that.
I was just thinking, the engines, if you need two engines, you got twin 250s, I think, or twin 200s down there. I don't know where, where that puts you on your power supply.
You're saying, take the engines off the yellow boots?
What Jeff said is take the engines off the yellow boots.
Well, you know, you got a couple of engines, you got a boat. Sometimes...
Yeah, why don't we put this to finance and then we can do that discussion at the, after finance comes back with the recommendation? Any further, yes, council?
Yeah, I'm just, Chief Flanagan, I'm just, again, I know there's a committee for this, but I'd like to see the new boat continue to keep the name, the Sentinel, since we're, you know, the money came from that boat and a lot of people donated to that boat.
And that's what's really making this motion.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any further discussion? Much, no other motions. Motion by council, Delvento, seconded by council, Leteri, to refer to finance, all those in favor opposed to two engines. Thank you.
Council president?
Yes.
Just as, since we discussed out in the hall, the matter that...
Oh, yes, we'll revert back, yeah.
I'd ask that you postpone the matter.
Okay.
I need to find out a very important element with respect to this.
From the...
On the motion table, the petition.
Postpone, set a table?
Do you want a table?
Motion to postpone by council vice president, Delvento, seconded by council, Honcorry. Motion has been postponed to no specific date. You got that, Tony? And on that authorization of the $37,000, would you advertise that, please?
Yes.
Six, a motion from the town manager that the town council transfer $6,000 from town council reserve to a special revenue fund for the town's portion of a joint energy manager grant. Don't take any other action relative there too.
For finance.
Motion by council vice president, Delvento, to refer to finance, seconded by, sorry, by council, Leteri. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fire bills, we have some kind of, the move that the town council vote to approve the payment of the prior year's bills in the amount of aggregate of $801.91 from the current year budget for each department, as noted. COA utilities, 01-54152-521600, $513.91 from the fiscal year, for the fiscal year 2014 and from DPW contract services, 0142052-544350. $288, and that was a fiscal year 13 bill. Do I have a motion?
Motion for the finance.
Motion to refer to finance by council vice president, Delvento.
Second.
Seconded by council, Sanford. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, president. Let me ask my finance commission committee if it's okay to meet on the same night, Wednesday night, the 27th?
27th.
At 7:30. With the time and place of the rules committee, after the rules meeting, we'll have the finance meeting.
Bill three items on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr.?
Yes, please, thank you.
Same night.
Although, although not on the agenda, I would like to propose a motion that the, that the town of Winthrop code of ordinances be amended as follows. Chapter 1712-080, storing motor vehicle restrictions. I'd like to, in line three, delete the word residential and in line four, delete the word residential. What this refers to is storage of unregistered, inoperable and uninsured vehicles. It's a definite restriction in residential zones. It does not mention commercial zones. What we've been attempting to do with the inspectional services, Mr. McKenna, is to take properties where they're unregistered, unattractive, unused vehicles stored for months and sometimes running into years, very unattractive. We don't at this point technically have a mechanism to have those removed. Some of the people have removed them voluntarily after being requested to do so. So the purpose of this motion is I would like to refer to rules and ordinances to take a look at this and I think it can be solved by just removing the word residential. So if I could have a motion to refer to rules?
Motion. And waive the rules first because the rule said the motion has to be in by Thursday or...
But, but I don't really need to waive the rules to refer, but I will. Motion to waive the rule because the motion was not in on the, by, motion by council vice president, Delvento, seconded by council, Sanford. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Could I have a motion to refer to rules? Motion by council, Sanford, to refer to rules. Mr. Chairman, any way, any possibility you could take that up that night?
Sure.
So we could maybe go next week because I'd like to get this...
Do we have a motion in writing? We get a motion in writing?
Yes.
It's gotta be advertised.
And we, I advertise that?
Advertise it for the meeting.
For the next meeting?
For that meeting. For the 27th, will be...
No, it's a public...
To the council meeting, we have to.
Right, it's a public hearing. You're amending a zoning.
Pardon?
You're amending a zoning ordinance.
That's right, so we'll need a public hearing at our next meeting. That's right.
September 2nd.
Right.
Also, the planning board first.
They need a report. They need to issue a report on that. That's correct.
So it needs to go to them before it goes to rules?
It can go simultaneously, but they need to issue a report to you on that. You're right.
Okay.
Definitely has to go there.
Okay.
At the rules meeting, soon.
Pardon?
We'll have, we'll, at the rules meeting, soon.
Okay, we'll discuss it. They have a time.
You want, you want that, that's where it comes from?
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate your consideration on the short notice and I think it's important. I believe that the finish of the...
Also, this was not on the agenda, but after the public comment earlier, I would like to see, I know time is always tough and with the schools, we've done a tremendous amount in a very short period of time. We're always under time constraints, but I would like to see if it's possible to have a meeting with the point at the PSA Hall and let everybody here, you know, I'm sure this has been vetted out before and I'm sure it's been a while, but I think it's important that we get everybody's comment on record and if there's anything we could do to appease the neighbors, I think it's important. So I would like to have that meeting if at all possible.
Okay. Could I suggest that when you have that meeting that you invite the parks committee?
Parks committee, sure.
To get along with the...
Sure.
Thank you, council. Appreciate that. Any further new business? Do we, you want that in a form of a motion?
Please.
So council, Leteri?
We have to waive the rules and so forth.
Yeah, we can waive the rule first. All those in favor waiving the rule because it's being the first time on the agenda and does not have a, was not in by 10, 1 o'clock on Thursday. All those in favor waiving the rule, say aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Motion by, oh, okay, council, Honcorry was opposed to waiving the rules.
Most consistent.
Motion from council, Leteri, to have the manager set up a meeting with the Point Shirley people, including the, or anybody that would like to be at the meeting and include the parks committee in that meeting, seconded by council vice president, Delvento. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, thank you. Any further new business? Under appointments, I have an appointment to Meredith Hurley to the parks committee. Meredith is Point Shirley resident. She's an RN, a mother of two and is very interested in serving on the parks committee. So I have appointed Meredith. Could I have a motion to confirm? Motion by council vice president, Delvento, seconded by, council, Sanford. Discussion?
Yeah, discussion. How many positions is the parks committee? I mean, have we set by number by the committee law, we said a number of five, and will this be the fifth person? And this person is replacing John Manning?
No, John Manning's position was already filled and then someone resigned after that position was voted.
And you won't consider Mrs. Manning as your, you won't consider Mrs. Manning as your appointment?
Mrs. Manning was not my first choice. Mrs. Hurley was. Motion to confirm has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Council, Honcorry abstains.
I abstained, too.
Council, Callow abstains. Public relations. I mean, public comment, excuse me.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
So let's go back to this parks committee here. So I understood the parks committee was set up to go off and help the town or whatever get these parks done. So I would like to see, you know, because we always, listen, as long as town government's been going along before I came and after I leave, it'll always be the same thing. We build it, and we don't take care of it. Now, the Parks Committee was built on building it, but why don't we change their, you know, direction and their charter a little, and ask them to be sort of the, you know, the go-betweens to maintain it, so they could come up with a maintenance plan, and maybe they could arrange a day where they, you know, the people in the different areas come down and meet with the beautification committee, and instead of, instead of somebody coming on and saying, hey, I want to help out on Pond Street, because I live on Pond Street, and then when they're done with Pond Street, we have to find new people for our Coughlin, why don't we keep the Park Committee going, and then they can meet, and they can go down there and say, hey, you know, we see that this is broken, or we see that this is done, or we see that that is done, and so instead of them being sort of a, you know, drive it, get it done, they become a long-term situation. So that's just a thought, I don't know where you.
Just, while we're on public comment on the Parks Committee, the Parks Committee was designed not by neighborhood by neighborhood. The original Parks Committee was composed of people from the Point, as well as people from the center area, and the goal of that Parks Committee was to work together on the center park, and stay together on the point park. In the meantime, they came up with spreading out and going over to Pond Street. In other words, the park wasn't designed, the Park Committee was not designed to be a group of Pico residents doing Pico Park, then having them go away and a group of Coughlin people doing Coughlin Park. The design idea was that we worked together on this park, and then we move on and work together on this park.
And that's just.
However, let me finish.
All right.
And their main function is not to design the park, or not to do the construction. Steve and Sean have listened to and taken their input, but the responsibility of what happens, as far as the construction is concerned in the park, as far as the design of what happens in the parks, is Steve's responsibility, and Paul O'Donnell works very closely with him, as does Sean, and that's why Steve and Sean and Paul are on the Park Committee, sort of as ex-official members. I think it's a great idea that the Parks Committee, given that Coughlin Park is the last park that they have as a charge to get done, then I think it's a great idea that we expand their focus to maintenance, and we certainly, if you just make a little motion for that for the next meeting, we'll discuss it a little more openly at that point, but I think it's a great idea. But just to be clear, that the Parks Committee to do Pico Park was not a neighborhood park people, nor was the committee, when they continued on to do Coughlin Park, a Point Shirley Committee. It was a combination of people. There is also a woman who lives near the Pond Street park, so it was, and they are not specifically doing their own parks. It's a townwide, the parks are townwide, the committee was townwide, the parks are owned by the town, not by the neighborhoods. Yes, I was accused tonight, Pico Park is done, I do happen to live near Pico Park, and I did play there as a kid. Pico Park is on the agenda, and funded, the town's portion, long before the Pico, long before the Parks Committee was established. The people, the fact that Pico Park was done and is in my neighborhood, believe it or not, had nothing to do with the Parks Committee or the president of the council. That was planned, I think it was planned before I was elected, but I'm not sure of that. So that's just a clarify, and if you would just give a.
So, yeah, because I, first of all, they have wild animals in that park when you were playing as a kid, or?
Only when you came down there.
No, because, because I think whatever, whatever it was good, I think a lot of those people on the parks said, hey, we're here to design the parks, now the parks are done, and I'm saying, okay, what if we just change their charter and say, you know, let's go? So, but that brings to, you know, three or four things altogether, so I think it's a good idea that we have a meeting with the people from the Point, but it brings me to a bigger issue, and that is the fact that, it's not that we haven't had meetings for any of these things, okay? In all due respect, the Parks Committee meets, if you want to go there, you can go there, and if you want to be involved, you can make a difference very, very easily. People, I go to a lot of meetings in town, and I'll tell you something, I see a lot of, I see a lot of committees out there that are looking for input, and they're looking for people, and I'll tell you something, about a year and a half ago, when I first came home, we got a charge to have an IT committee, and I don't think we had one person apply for that IT committee, and I know there's IT professionals in town that could satisfy that need, and I've met with a couple of people that I think will be good, but a lot of people don't come to meetings, and a lot of people don't get involved, and then they hear about things, and they read about things, and they write about things, and I read those things, and I say, whoa, this is way over the top, and those meetings are open, so I think it's a great idea, you have it, and the people come down, but you have to be involved in more than one thing if you want to see the town, you know, if you want to see the town do well. And I want to extend it to one more thing. We all got a letter a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago, about this guy that wanted to talk about having our own internet, so nothing against Comcast, but in, you know, in Winthrop, we have one provider for your internet, okay? Or you can get a dish, okay? So there's a, there's a town that I spoke, was in the MNA thing, I got the online, and I went online there, and they talked about this town out in Somerisville, and they had no cable service, and they went off and they became their own cable provider, and I talked to the people there, and there's like 800 homes in town, they all coughed up $300 a year for a bond, and now the town is going to be providing them their fiber. And I'll tell you why I think this is very, very important. My cable bill is now $188 a month. I get a phone, and I have to be honest with you, anybody get a phone call at home anymore? You know, you don't need it anymore, and between, I know these are, you know, not for all of us, but between Hulu and Sling Box and all the new medias, my guess is, you know, that a whole generation of people is going to come up and not need cable TV, because you can subscribe to HBO, you can subscribe to Apple TV, you can subscribe to Chrome TV, and what if the town thought about going in and becoming our own fiber optic operator, the same way some towns have their own treatment plant, and they have their own electric plant, and then we could do that, and I'll tell you something, we'd probably generate enough money to have our own cable TV that wasn't sponsored by Comcast, and maybe a few other things, and I don't know who does it, where it goes, but I think it's a real thing to take a look at, and, you know, maybe from now on, if you want internet, you'll get that, because the town out there, it was $70 if you just wanted internet, it was $70 if you just wanted a phone, and it was like $85 if you wanted phone and internet. And I'll tell you, I was away a couple of days ago, and you go on the internet, and you can watch, you know, HBO, and you can watch Channel 7, you can watch, you know, all these different things, and I think that we could be, you know, building something for the future.
So was this guy that, I responded to you, is that a guy that has?
No, he doesn't have a lot, but this MNA, this town out in whatever, they did it, so that's my.
Thank you, moving on.
Counsel president?
Yeah.
I actually wanted to make a comment.
Yeah.
Going back to prior to this fiber optic conversation, going back to the Park, Parks and the Committee. We, as a council, we promote, we ask for people to volunteer. We promote, you know, you know, we say to people, please, you know, we want you, we need you, you know, we had a young woman here tonight that is very energetic, and she's very passionate about parks and all of that, and she has a proven track record that she's raised a lot of money. Why wouldn't we want to have her on that committee, even if it was in an alternate position? I just had someone that just left the committee, and there's a lot of times when people can't even make the meetings, and if you have another person there, they may be valuable in, you know, bringing up ideas, or they may be needed for some kind of a vote, or maybe to get out there and make some calls and do some things. I mean, we try to encourage people to be involved, and then when we have someone that wants to be involved, it seems like she was kind of like overlooked, passed over, however, whatever you want to say, and for whatever reason it happened, I have no idea, but that really doesn't send a good message to somebody that really wants to volunteer.
Counsel president has the responsibility to make the choices of committee appointments that he thinks is most appropriate. In this particular case, my decision was the appropriate person that I appointed. I will not get into discussing personalities.
No, I'm talking about an alternate position. You know, I guess there were, there were two alternate positions on one of the other Park Committees, that's all.
There were.
Yeah.
At this point, my decision is that we have five members, and we don't have any alternates. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Pope?
Yes, I want to thank Mr. LaTieri for setting the wheels in motion for.
Thank you.
On behalf of the Point people, to have a meeting down there, and I was wondering, is there any way we can put a notice in the transcript as to notify all the Point people of the meeting?
Forgive me, but I need to look at my schedule and try to make arrangements.
Okay.
I will get a word out to folks when that happens.
Okay, excellent.
It'll be sooner than later, but I just need to.
Maybe you can work to Paul McGee, because you met with him before, did you?
Yes, we did.
Okay, and also, I believe when they did Pico Park, they were five Pico residents on there, on that area, and two alternates. On the Point, as far as I have been seen, and I venture two of the Park Renovation Committee members myself, there were only four people there, four people on the committee, only one, or possibly two, from the Point, only four people, not even five.
There were five, the fifth one, for personal reasons, wasn't attending and then resigned.
Okay, the latest meeting I went to was July 15th, and there were four.
Right.
And that was all.
Right.
And only one, possibly two, from the Point, and I don't see why you shouldn't want people from the area of the park to have their input, because they are the people that use that park daily, they're the people that knows what goes on in that park, what gets used, what doesn't get used. Why wouldn't you want people from that area on the committee?
That's, that was exactly the design, that there would be people not just from that area, but people from that area, and I can't tell you off the top of my head how many people are on there that are from the Point right now.
One, maybe two.
There are two as of tonight.
Maybe two.
If there was one, there are two as of tonight.
Right, thank you.
And I know there's another lady from the Pond Street area.
Liz.
And another lady from the Pico area.
Sullivan from Pico.
And who's the fifth one?
Liz from Island.
Yeah. And who's the fifth one?
I don't know if there is a fifth.
Yeah, there is.
Linda. From the Point, and Julie, and I don't even know where she lives.
Julie's on Marshall Street.
It's one person, then?
Two.
Five, four.
It's two. You have Linda, and now you have Meredith Hurley.
Oh, I don't know if Meredith, she must have just, she must have knew.
No, her husband was, her father, her father-in-law was born here and grew up here, her husband was born here and grew up here.
Is she from the Point?
She moved here 12 years ago.
Shirley Street.
She lives on the Point, on the far end of Shirley Street, beyond Church Square.
Thank you.
Yes, Steve?
I just want to comment on the meeting. I'm happy to be part of the group and sit with the Point Shirley people. I do need to just bring to light where we are in the process of the park. We did sit with the Parks Committee, we listened to recommendations from the Parks Committee. In fact, this man was still a part of the Parks Committee when we started Puffin Park. The recommendations were to expand the play area down at Puffin Park, to shift it more towards the street, to be assured that they would get a rubberized surface. We've done all this, we've gone in front of Hong Kong, and given us a determination. Things are where they need to be, we don't have the time to go back in front of the conservation if we get recommendations to move things around. We've got tactically, with spending that money by December 31st, I really got to figure on having that park built by the end of October, because Chris Manning is correct, that rubberized surface cannot be poured after the temperature gets too cold. The bid opening for that part of the work opens up this Thursday morning, so I just don't, I don't want to go into a meeting, people under the false impression that they're going to go there and they're going to make a bunch of recommendations for changes. Things are already established, we're very, very far along in this process, and, you know, I just want anybody, anyone to clarify that.
I think the purpose of the meeting could well be to explain that, that you're far along in the process, and this is, this is where we're at, and this is what's going to happen, and, yeah, I think that's very, very clear. Yes, counsel?
And I know Steve's willing to listen and see what we can do on certain items, but I, you know, I have to back what Steve said, and that is, these plans were developed a while ago, there were representatives from the Point on the committee when the plans were established. There are still members from the, of the committee on the Point, hopefully they're representing the community, because there are at least two members at all times from the Point out of the five, and usually, the input from the local representatives are viewed higher and taken into consideration in design. Plans were drawn, went to Conservation Commission, they've been public hearings, Conservation Commission did notices, the plans were established many, many months ago, before what's being done. So like Steve said, we can't really, right, at this point, you know, changes may be possible in some areas, but a lot of it's pretty much what's going to be, and like I said, there were representative, representation from the Point on the committee, and they had input into what's happening, so, you know, we all felt that the committee members from the Point were representing the Point for the, and the neighborhood for the needs and desires of the neighborhood, so I don't know what, you know, broke down there, but they were, one of their goals was, one of their purposes was to provide the neighborhood input, which they did to Steve in the design phase.
Any further public comment? Seeing none. A motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to potential and ongoing litigation regarding topics of the, updates on the.
I'm sorry.
We did that a moment. All right.
Sure.
So we, to go into executive session, and the items that we will discuss is the updates on litigation on the Atlantis, litigation on potential litigation with Atlantis Marina, bed and breakfast issues, the DEP applications on Marina expansion, and a freedom of information request, the discussion of the disposition of the minutes of the, past the previous executive sessions that have not been voted or published, because of the fact that they still deal with penalty issues. So.
7B3.
Yeah. The chair declares that discussion of these matters could have a detrimental effect on the litigation process, and therefore, we would like to have a motion to go into executive session, which requires a roll call vote.
Motion.
Motion by counsel Delvento, seconded by counsel Sanford. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Roll call.
I know, that's right, you're right. Roll call, I was going to do the roll call.
Counsel Callum. Yes. Counsel Sanford.
Yeah.
Counsel Moncuri.
Yes.
Counsel Marone. Counsel LaTieri.
Yes.
Counsel Boyager.
Yes.